For Clay City and if y'all stand, we're gonna have a pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. We have some announcements we're gonna make. Um, I don't know if you've all heard, but Sue Boo, who used to be our clerk, and she was very good, and she was good to the town. Um, she passed away. Her celebration of life is Saturday from two to five, and if we can take about thirty seconds just for a moment of silence for her. Thank you.
Amen.
Um, November eighth, we have a fair bingo. Is that at the, that's at the church, right?
Yeah, First Church.
First Church. Uh, December sixth is the chocolate walk for the, and the, um, come, the holiday thing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then we've got our hours for the holidays for November, December, and January posted there. So then we are moving on to approval of last month's minutes.
And I'll make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Um, we're gonna open up the floor for public comments, but I wanna, I wanna say something first. If this is about the officers, we're doing that at the end, so anything else that we need to take care of business-wise, we're gonna do that first. So if you have anything besides that, please, you have four minutes.
I got a question. Most businesses conduct quarterly or semi-annual audits internally, and they report to their stakeholders, organizations, unions do it, Kirk can attest to that. They have quarterly audits for all their finances. Do we do that as a, as a town, our government?
We have Keystone, who we-
Who we do an internal audit?
What do you mean by internal? We have, uh, an accountant come in and do it.
Okay, and it's quarterly, semi-annually?
Actually, they've been here every month for the last year.
But, but I'm talking about standard operating procedure for it.
No, there's no requirement for that. There's no requirement. The state board-
I'm talking to the president. I'm not talking to our hired attorney. I'm talking to the president.
I'm answering, I'm providing you, sir, sir, I'm providing you a legal explanation. It's the State Board of Accounts is who reviews the town's books.
Okay.
There is no procedure either set up statutorily or otherwise that provides for any quarterly or semi-annual internal audits.
Okay, so it could be set up. There's nothing illegal.
Here are your twenty questions and your twenty answers, sir.
Excellent. So-
And anybody else that wants some, we can shoot a copy.
To, just to clarify, we do not do an internal audit a quarterly. Okay, is that correct? That's the answer we were looking for?
Yes, yes.
That's correct.
So we just kind of float through the year and wait for the accountant on a normal operating procedure? And ma'am, I wanna explain something to you. I'm not here to do gotcha or try and do any discredit to our town. The only way problems get resolved is through communication and debate. And if, and if we don't bring these questions up and are not received, and a manager says, hey, you know, this is a problem, look at all these people here.
Why did it take this day? Usually I have two people in here for this meeting. Why did it take this day? This day?
Well, I don't know. Maybe everybody just got interested all of a sudden. But ma'am, the thing I'm asking you is, this may be something that could help us head off trouble in the future, that we do an audit, we release that information to the public, we read it at a meeting, say, this is the quarterly audit for our finances, this is where we stand. This isn't me coming at you to go to war. This is me asking questions that I'm sure everybody in this room probably would like to work on with you to solve these problems.
Okay.
So don't, don't come at me aggressively.
I'm not coming at you aggressively. I want you to know-
I didn't.
Hey, all I'm saying is every month, we have had accountants in here for over a year and a half trying to clean up a mess.
Sure, I understand that.
So it's not that we are not working on it?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, then I'm, I'm not sure what else we could do besides that at this moment.
Well, I'm not talking about at this moment. I'm talking about from here forward as a standard operating procedure, so that we would never maybe get in this moment again. And, and I don't know what happened before. I have no involvement in that.
We could talk about it, but it is not our standard procedure at this time.
But we, we could look at that maybe.
Yes.
Okay, that's a good deal. Um, sorry. So, um, and who is town attorney? Is this him?
Yes, his name is Chris Gamble from Gamble Law.
Nice to meet you, Chris. Um, does he attend every meeting for us?
No, he doesn't. He's here quarterly.
Oh, quarterly. Okay, very good. And what is his functions to the town, just so I understand what they are? I, I know we need an attorney. I'm just asking.
By law, we have to have an attorney, and he is on retainer. So anytime we need legal advice, we call him and he works for us. Or if I have a question of any kind, he will answer it.
Okay, very good.
So yes, he is there twenty-four seven. I've called him on vacation. I've called him any time.
It's about legal matters that come before the town?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, the other thing I'd like to ask, so we have water meters all over the town to read the meters going into the homes. Do we have meters on the towers that, as it comes out of the tower?
We have a meter on our-
And if somebody else has to answer, that's fine. I'm just trying to find out.
Randy.
Have a meter on our tower. Are you, are you talking about gallons come in?
All the meters in town get read, whether it's the drive-by or, um, they're physically read with a handheld. And then we have some new meters that we bought that are, we have to physically open up and look at. So then we, I put all those in the computer and it generates, okay, so here's all of our customers. This is the tally of the, the gallons that they use.
Sure.
At the water plant, there's a main meter, and every single day, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday, it's, it's red. So then we look at, okay, so this is how many gallons we pump. This is how much our customers have to use. The wastewater treatment plant, every single day has a meter that's red. Okay, this is the wastewater that comes to the plant that all the customers have flushed their toilets or whatever. The way it's set up right now, every, um, three years, there is water, um, audit, basically from the state that comes in, and every couple of years, they come into the wastewater treatment plant. And they'll look through all of our paperwork and they check everything that has in the plant. And, um, online, on your water bill, I'm sure most of these people have seen that it says, a consumer confidence report, and then we have the whole lead and copper thing that's going on with the lead piping for the town.
So we can balance what we've sent out?
Yes.
And what's been read on the town's meter? So we could tell if we're having an exorbitant amount of leaks?
Yes, and things like that.
Okay, so how's it been?
That's done every month.
How would you say it's been balancing over the last, say, couple of years?
Well, um, unfortunately-
And I can't owe you nothing, because you weren't prepared for this.
No, but no, a couple of years, there has been some issues, but we're trying to work through that, and we are narrowing down the gap. We, uh, a few months ago, I found five customers watering water, but weren't paying one of those. So we, so we're going, when they transitioned into Keystone, there's several things that were left through the cracks. So now we're trying to narrow down that gap and get it in line.
Trying to resolve water leak issues and all this.
Yes, and there's, and then through several, several clerks, our water and wastewater has been in jeopardy, but thanks to Sue Boo, and then they brought me in here, because that's what I do for living is water and wastewater, we have put money back into our water and sewer department that wasn't there before.
When was the last time our water department had a raise on its, uh?
Sewer, but you-
No, 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 on the water side.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah. When we built the new tower and got the loan for it, we had to have a raise.
That's not something you wanna do to the customer.
I, I would rather not.
The stakes of other clerks, whatever.
I'm not talking about any other clerks or anything in the past. I'm talking about moving forward as a community.
Well, as the need goes and as bills arise and, and things like, you know, if you need, we got a water tower. I think our budget is, is set for, to make that payment. I think we're good to make that payment. Well, if we need the other new water upgrades, what happens is, is there's an internal audit of all the bills, all the money, and then they'll go in and say, okay, so we're gonna have to raise each customer such and such to accommodate a new type of instruction. But right now, at this moment, we don't need that. We're not in the need for it. We're finally on track.
We hire a rate consultant.
Yes.
Typically, whenever there's a-
It's not something they decide.
A loan obligation occurs because they do an improvement. We're being a rate consultant who makes a determination to, to be able to pay the bills and to maintain it.
We're not forecasting then potential, the degradation of our water systems. So hey, you know, to maintain our current system, probably oughta, maybe, and nobody wants, I'm gonna promise you, guys, I don't pay any more bills than I have to either. I'm right there with you. But if we're gonna maintain the town here, then it's just like if you have a vehicle. You gotta plan to change the oil. You may not need to change it today, but you have to change it in the tires. So that's what I'm saying.
In the early two thousands, all new water lines were put in. And then, um, a few years- the whole, in town of Clay City, all new, they took out any copper, lead, metal. And all new water meters were put in place, all new lines were put in place. And then in two thousand seventeen, we got a complete upgrade of our water plant itself. And then once a year, we actually have a company that comes in and specs both wells, pulls them, they do what's called a drawdown to see how, how well your wells are doing. That is done every year. And now we're have, we're having inspections on our water tower. We got the new water tower, and I'm not gonna take away because I don't know what we're gonna talk about, our new water tower. But right now, currently at this moment, we're using all three water towers, but, uh, basically, our system, I mean, is twenty-five years old, but it's still in good shape. And we're trying, anytime somebody says there's a leak or they see water, we've got Doug, and I've helped Doug fix a few, but, um, trying to be in town home as much as possible, but you know, we're, we've tried our best to be on it and fix it so we have a lot of water. But our system's pretty good.
Do you feel like our, our system's sovereign and it's good for another few years?
Oh, easily. It's all plastic. I mean, they put in poly, poly-pied, pretty thick, and all new taps, all new lines. I mean, we have to change our water meters, of course, but no, our system's pretty solid.
So our municipality system, then we feel good about it. Is that, that's one of our town's ways of revenue, is that correct?
That's where the debt is. All their money is through the water meters, all the, everything.
The water and the sewer are self-sufficient. Their money does not go into our general account to operate. It stays in those utilities.
And it, it never draws anything from the town then as well, is that correct, or am I mistaken?
Do we pay? No, we do not.
Nothing comes out of the general account?
We have, because we haven't made the money, because it wasn't put in there right. But-
We're not doing that.
What, what is happening is they're self-sufficient. They're making the money that's paying for the new water tower. They're making the money that's paying for the sewage, or the, the lining of the sewage pipes that we did a couple of years ago. They're paying for all-
It's sovereign.
Right. And that's, that's why I can't understand why you were asking about the utilities theirself, because they are up to date. They're up to code. We get in-
I'm asking about it because I'm a, I'm a citizen that uses it.
Yes.
And I also work for Center for Energy, and our customers ask us a lot of questions, and we try to answer them as quickly as we can. So, um, once again, I'm looking forward. Okay, I know everybody's all looking backwards at something that happened or whatever. People above us can take care of that, but I'm talking about looking forward. So I wanted to make sure that if our water says, somebody says, hey, you know, in five years, we're probably gonna have to replace this, then we need to start preparing for it today.
Yeah.
And start getting that money working. Um, my next question is actually about my, what are the sources of income for the city? And do we have like CDs and bonds and any investments?
We have one CD for the town. You guys can find all of this online. One CD for the town is just over ten thousand dollars. It is at First Financial. That is only one, because we had to cut cash in a couple of years ago-
Sure.
-to help keep us going.
Uh, okay.
Um, so yes, we have one CD. Our finances right now is, we started this twenty-twenty-five, four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Guess where we're at today?
Yeah, so that-
Dollars in the hole.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so then we really need to get together as a community and, and start resolving a path forward.
Yes.
And, and not just because of those twenty questions that I proposed to bring here tonight, because I didn't wanna, for people to say, well, he's trying to play gotcha. I'm not at all.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I've got grandchildren. I know several of these people have grandchildren and children, and we wanna make sure this town's here for the future, because what happens is, we've got businesses frozen, buildings in disrepair, which that's not your fault. Those are privately owned businesses. I'm not going there.
I got you.
But I'm also saying, if this town goes, that high school over there that Doc Buell worked so hard for goes too. And if we can't get together-
That's why we have worked to, to put a new water system in. We're working to put all the things that are necessities here. Yes, we would love to have a generator, but right now, we don't have the funds to do a generator. So there are things that we have on our wish list.
Mm-hmm.
But if you have ideas on how to attain some of that stuff?
Well, the first way to the idea is, we gotta, we gotta ask questions and know where we're lacking. That's what all my questions are about. I did not go after anybody. I said, these things are a concern to every citizen in this town, and they are, because we wanna keep it in this town. And, and we're gonna do what we can to help.
You don't wanna keep it any more than everybody that works-
With you. That's why I'm asking these questions, and everybody tends to get all worked up about them. There's no reason to get worked up. These are problems that we need to get out in the open. We need to talk. There's, like I said, there's a lot of intelligence in this room of people that are willing to help.
That is the only thing that I have taken offense to what you've said, to get it out in the open, because everything here is public. You can get online, you can come in and ask, you can come to all the meetings. We have this video, and it is on every month. You can go in and watch every meeting. So everything is out-
All these questions I asked you, you've answered in the past?
If people have asked them, yes.
Okay, well, that's why I asked them.
Yeah.
So I wanna make sure I get the answers that we're all looking for.
Okay.
So don't get so defensive, everybody. If, if I, and I, and I wanna tell you, I'm all about dough. And I think our, even our little town, we need to go line item by line item, everything we spend, every credit card receipt, everything we do. Not saying anybody's doing anything wrong. We just need to be able to justify how, how we can get out of the hole we're in. We may all have to take cuts. It's the way it works.
Just out of curiosity, what makes you think that we don't do that?
I, I have never seen anything on it. That's why I'm asking.
Come in the office.
At work, to a town council meeting and ask a question. Okay, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
It's sometimes it's hard to get in the office, and most of these people here probably have forty-hour week minimum jobs. So I did make an effort. I also put the questions out. I'm just looking to help.
Okay, yes, but I just don't want you to assume that those things are not happening.
I'm not assuming. I just ask, do we do it?
Yes, we do.
And who does that? She audits all of our books?
She is the elected clerk, and she does-
Not just her. She has, she has several people that help support her in doing this.
So-
Yeah, she does the initial, but she, and she can tell you, she has several people that help back up and make sure all of her doctors are enrolled, because we don't wanna go back to what we've had a few years ago.
And, and we could come in here and, and review those at this table and do the day.
Do you ever, did you get on State Board of Accounts and read our audit?
I went through several audits, way back years ago.
They have a, a very detailed account of our finances at the time.
I understand what they have.
So currently, where we're at, so that everybody knows, is the clerk treasurer before me, Lisa Lance, telling anybody out or being hateful or whatever, it's just, it's the fact of the matter. She did not do her job. She just didn't. They're negligent. She didn't do bank reconciliations.
This probably seems like a lot of speculation. We probably shouldn't talk about any of that.
No, it's true.
There's been an accounting update.
It's, it's the truth. Um, so what, when I stepped into this role in February of twenty-twenty-five, it was a mess.
Well, the payroll taxes had not been paid.
Payroll taxes hadn't been done. Taxes hadn't even been filed properly. We had, I mean-
We don't have an accountant do our taxes.
No.
They had not. We, we implemented internal controls. Um, so we were not compliant with State Board of Accounts. I came in, I were, I volunteered before I even took this position and got everything, everything squared away, everything that the State Board of Accounts said, hey, you've not been doing this. She's not been doing this. We fixed everything. Um, I am currently, I just sent everything, all of the bank reconciliations to Melissa Griffin, um, with the State Board of Accounts. She's coming on the seventeenth to go over everything. I have checks and balances in place, because I, this is my first year. I am human and I expect to make mistakes. I want, I want those balances, checks, and controls. Everything that we do, it follows protocol, everything that we spend, um, all the money coming in, I'm having them double-check to make sure that I'm seeding it into the proper funds, that what I'm expending is coming out of the proper funds. So we are trying very hard to get everything, you know, back on track, but it's, this wasn't just last year. It's been years. So it's going to take a little bit of time to get everything back, back in balance.
Well, I can tell you my four minutes are more than enough.
Yes.
Because I've seen the hand signals coming from everybody. So I'm gonna turn it over and let somebody else ask some questions. Hopefully they'll follow through some of the stuff I wanna-
Can I say something? My name is Terry Conno for the record. I live at six oh one Outline Street. I'm, I'm asking this because I've asked about it at least twice in, in a town council meeting. Um, and, and this is, this is old business, but it's not showing up here, and the work has not been done either. Um, when, when I moved here, we had rain come down the front yard, flooded, and I, I talked about asking if there was a possibility to have an corridor run under the alley, because there's a drain on the corner of Seventh and Forest. And, uh, and so it does flood when it rains. And, uh, but, you know, I haven't said anything since the last time I mentioned it was probably, probably about three or four years ago. Prior to that, it was in twenty nineteen when I mentioned it. So, um, it hasn't been done yet. I'm just curious. Any ideas? I understand we, we are working on, working, um, in the red, but any ideas?
Doug?
When will you have free time? It will probably take a full day.
You're talking about the alley behind the Outline Street, in the Outline Forest, right?
Yes, on Sixth.
You have to order it first.
Size of culvert is?
There is none.
What size should it take?
Six inch range.
Somebody get with me after the meeting. I might be able to help you out with the pipe for that call.
Just gotta make sure, I'm sure with all the utilities running through the alley.
I'm not putting it in.
I'm not, just saying.
I might be able to help you guys out with that, okay?
So Doug, y'all work with him? Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Are the finances between the, um, water works and the town separate?
Yes.
Yes.
With different accounts?
Yes.
And the, uh, I, I'm saying this just to simplify this. Um, I have a very simple mind. Uh, the, and all the information can be found on the Clay City, the, the website that is being used for the, um, to pay the market.
Can you tell them where?
Sorry, somebody was texting.
I, I use it, so I know what it is, but-
Yes.
If, if you could just state it, so we can all-
So we have, we have separate accounts. So we've got a general account, a sewer account, um, and a water account, and then we have a payroll account. All of the money comes in through Keystone, and it, it's received to specific funds. Um, those allocations that come, that come in can only go into that, and then they're only received out to those, you know, those proper entities, does that answer it?
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to simplify everything.
Yeah.
I think your question, where do we find it at, is that what you were asking?
So you can find that online. Um, we are gonna upload everything through, uh, the website. The DLGF Gateway has our entire budget, every, all of them, you can find all of that stuff. And then our goal is, once we have all of the bank reconciliations and the state comes in and says, yes, it looks good, we approve it, um, that's when we can start really building and doing like monthly reports. That's my goal, is to get to monthly reports where I say, this is how much we have in general, this is the bank reconciliations. We're not there yet, but we are, we are working, working on it.
Yeah, and that's where I was gonna go with the, I know the state has, uh, legally put some of those, uh-
Yes.
Procedures.
Yeah, so I work really closely with, um, Ben Swift. He is our DLGF rep. I just talked to him this morning. Um, we submitted the twenty-twenty-six budget. He, everything looks good. We're waiting on the bank reconciliations from Melissa. She's with the State Board of Accounts. Once she gives us the thumb, the thumbs up, I can upload all of that stuff, but in the past, it's been uploaded, removed, uploaded, removed. It's not right, and then they came in and redid it. I, I'm not doing that. It, we'll do it right the first time, submit it, and then we have a true representation of where we're at, and then from then on, we'll know where we're going.
And you can get to DLGF at, uh, indiana.gov, and that will tell you, then you go to Clay City, and then it'll take you then to our account.
Yeah, Town of Clay City. And I can send the links, and I answered your questions. Everything that I sent, or everything I answered with him, I made sure to go through the attorney and all of the departments. Um, I will be posting that on social media. I just didn't wanna shoot from the hip and answer things and then, you know, be twisted.
Really cool if we could actually put a link on our website to that.
Yeah, we will. We're working on all that. We've got a bunch of the stuff uploaded, all the ordinances and internal controls. Um, we'll keep doing it.
Anybody else?
Are we getting our town ordinances uploaded to the website so anybody could, like, there's a lot of people that can't get out on the-
There's a lot of them that's uploaded. Um, I think we've got probably three months that we need to upload. Um, and then I think there was one resolution that we need to upload.
Clerk's treasure report?
I gave it. That's, that's, that's pretty much where I'm at.
I have a question. What is the penalty for not abiding by whatever letters you send out as far as building conditions?
Oh.
Is there a penalty for that, if you don't?
Uh, so you're talking about in regards to the main-
Just in general, is there a penalty if somebody is-
Well, it depends on the circumstance. So like, if we do, Chris, you can take it over.
Each ordinance has a specific fine provision. Now, there are several ordinances that permit the town to take legal action, which would result sometimes in attorney fees or in some other penalty. Particularly like the nuisance statute, or the nuisance ordinance that we have, if we go to court, we can get a, a court order for what's called specific performance. And that's an order from the judge directing the homeowner to clean up the mess or to, to, to repair the building. So there are different, different penalties and different provisions for the different ordinances that we have, but typically, most of the ordinance violations provide for a fine.
So what is going on with this public hazard we have?
Well, we were-
Well, that's the truth. It's a public hazard.
We were good to it in a minute, but we'll go ahead and do it. Shannon needed to leave anyway. Um, tomorrow?
Hopefully. Haven't heard back, but-
Tomorrow, he is supposed to assume that building. He, he, if he has the paperwork done. And we had sent a letter to the pharmacy guy, what's his name?
Alvy.
Alvy.
Alkeesh.
Okay, well, we had sent a letter to over there saying he had thirty days to clean it up. Well, that will be up on the eighth, that they were supposed to clean it up. But we can't open the road until something comes down, because twice it has fallen bricks.
Oh, we can't, yeah.
Yes, so we can't open the road until we do something about it. Shannon has a plan, and if you let him speak, he'll tell you what his plan is.
Shannon Combs, uh, in the middle of purchasing the building right now. I can't really spend any time or money until it's officially mine, but, uh, some papers are supposed to be, uh, able to be signed tomorrow. Uh, but basically, the gist of the plan would be to, uh, be prepared to make a cut at the very top of the header of the windows, the second-story windows, and we'll take brick, kinda let the building speak to us, take brick as we need it. Uh, throw a headerboard all the way across that, reinforce that with some heavy-duty, um, snow fence type of material, be wire mesh probably, then it'll go over the top of that wall, and we'll tack it down if it gets, the road can open, and then there'll be a build plan after that. We're gonna try to salvage the building, so. And I'm completely open with working with my neighbor, so we'll all be happy and everything will be good, and hopefully, put another business in there and bring some more money to the town.
But he has also purchased the business across the street, and he's having a grand opening on the fourteenth. So he wants the road open as bad as we do for his business. So, he wants the road open as bad as we do for his business. So, he's going to get on it.
Clean up on that as soon as it's mine, as soon as a quick, uh, claim deed is done. Clean up on that will start immediately. Uh, and I would say maybe five to seven days. I'm hoping to get it to where the road can be opened up and it's safe for passerby's. And then, uh, we'll do the extensive bill plan after that. Um, and then, uh, in consideration of the old business too. All the remodel is going good here. The open date will be the fourteenth. Uh, there'll be a fence put around, um, the city area here that I've cleaned up and rocked. Uh, there'll be an outdoor seating area with a fence around it there. And like I said, hope to bring more business with that. And then whatever that building has suffered as well, so. Uh, I've done a couple inspections over there. I think the building is pretty solid. I do have a structural engineer coming out next week that I've hired out of Terre Haute, just to double check, uh, what I see to go forward. And then, um, I think the structure for the most part is pretty good. A little bit of a, um, of a veneer, kind of a facade on the outside of that. Uh, and then whether we decide to build that back up or make a change, then we'll, we'll do so. Should happen pretty quick.
Two to three weeks.
Uh, yeah, yeah, at the most. At least for it to be a...
A hometown holiday, like, mansion coming up and we'd like for people to see our town in it.
We do have some cold weather, so before any major construction or, um, uh, you know, to actually make it back to where it was or better, uh, but it'll be safe and for a passerby and all that kind of stuff.
Will there be any kind of safety infection after you've done the temporary work?
Well, I'll probably, uh, hire my own. It'll be a third party that comes in just for me to have something on my desk. Um, so once the, um, uh, structural engineer comes out, I'll try to get recommendations out of him or I will tell him my recommendations, see if it meets what, uh, what he's got in mind. Then after that, I'll have somebody go through, so I have a third party on my desk.
Very good. Marshall who shut down the, the parade before because of buildings that were having problems after a storm might be somebody to get involved in your inspection for you since he's a local guy here.
Uh, dealing with somebody who's on the structural side is, kind of makes me feel a little better, but yeah, I mean, anything...
Yeah, I just think he has the power to shut that stuff down if the buildings aren't right. So, I think Keith Grasik might be, if I do it in, he might be somebody to reach out to.
Having something to present to him, showing him that it's been inspected, I think will go a long way too, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Mine?
Yeah, I already knew Shannon's plans.
And I'll talk to Danielle and we'll talk more.
Okay. He will speak to me.
I've heard that.
Okay. Uh, Clark-Treasure, you got yours? Police Department. Are you got anything?
Oh, ours was, was semi, semi business as usual. But I do have that bill that you guys said you needed to vote on.
Oh.
You asked me not to turn in with my scum and turned it into my insurance instead.
We didn't, okay. I already approved it, so it, it's up to you. You just needed two people.
Oh, yeah.
That's fine. I thought you'd already worked on it. Anything else?
Nope, that's all we got.
All right.
I think we got plenty more in store for us, so.
Water report?
You have the...
Adjustments?
Adjustments in front of you, the penalties that we have heard about, please, the water bills and, um...
Yeah, four.
The disconnects.
Four sewer adjustments. Do you want to make a motion to approve those?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the sewer adjustments.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And these are the, um, shut offs that she was going to do.
We physically only shut off two people, one person already, like, I guess they moved out and decided they didn't want to tell us, didn't want to pay the bill anymore, so there's only two other people.
Did you get that, I left Friday about the one that called them?
Okay, yeah.
All righty. Jim?
Got inspected, inspection went good. No big problem. Full bulbs probably tomorrow. Put it up for the, for the winner. Other than that, things run smooth.
Good.
Waste water inspection.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she comes in, it's been, it was two years since her last inspection, so, yeah, she just went through.
Doug?
Business as usual. Takes three weeks since last meeting. Meter reading looked pretty well. Physically flipped, a hundred and twenty of them. Just cleaning up dig sites, no?
Can you physically flip?
During, um, when he started reading meters, if you guys remember, there was this, what, um, what was it? Uh, Amazon, uh, situation was going on with our, our internet. As you know, as he started trying, it, it picks up reads through the internet, basically. It's going to a laptop, so he had to flip more lids than normal.
Oh, okay, he's flipping the lid, okay.
Flip lids means that he's picking up with a computer or a handheld. And usually those just kind of gravitate into that stuff. So, if there's not a read, when I go to put it in the computer, I'll say, hey Doug, there's a list of people. I didn't get a reading for it. So, he'll actually have to go and flip the lids and read the numbers.
So, we do ask them when we, oh, for the new ones.
The new ones we, the new ones we installed is physical read meters so that we have an actual accounting. Because those were less expensive than the drive-bys. We were trying to save the town money when we just have to go and...
That's all that right now.
Well, that's all of our department reports, so we're going to move on to old business. We already had Shannon's update, so that's already marked off. We're going to go with the tower update. We met with Midwestern today. They gave us, um, two choices on, um, what we are going to do to fix the issue that they occurred.
Let me explain to everybody. That we hired this engineering firm to design the new tower. They designed it incorrectly. And now they're trying to cure their error, so.
Yes, and I'll stand up so you can kind of see it. But this metal design is what we think we're going to go with and because of two reasons. Codwell Tank put that tower over there and they're the ones that submitted this design. We're still under contract with them because we have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So, that grant, to keep it intact where we don't have to pay it back and, and run into a mess, we think this is a better plan, not only because of that, but because they're going to take the bowl, cut it, they're going to take it down, work on the ground, cut it in two and add six feet to the tank. To do that, that's another twenty-five thousand gallons of water. This one was Phoenix Tank. And if you look at it, the tank is the same, but they were going to cut it off at the ground, add six feet here on all the posts. But when you, when those legs go up, they're crooked like this. So, what they were going to do is put them straight here and have these cricket. That, that didn't make a lot of sense to people because weakness and... So, then they had to put all these ties in to make it sturdy. So, this right here is the one that we're probably going to go with. And we need to take a vote on that tonight because they have to know by morning. So, if anybody wants to look at these, they're welcome to. I have some pictures on how they would take it apart. But they would redo the EO logo and it would be, you know, bigger and whatever. But they would have to repaint the whole tower.
So, DeNella, the, the, the problem was that we're six feet short.
Short.
So, we got to push it up six, at their cost.
And the reason it has to go up six feet is because it's shorter than our other towers, which drain the new tower six feet because they're supposed to all fill up even at the same time. Randy, you want to explain all that?
So, what happened was, is, yes, they went back, uh, we've dealt with Midwest engineers for the longest time. They've done all of our projects. And when they came in to put the new tower in, they looked at their blueprints that they've had all these years. And they put up the new tower. They're like, hey, Randy, we're ready. We need you to fill this up, we're going to run some back tees and then your tower should be good to go besides a few things that they had to come back and fix. So, in the process of me grabbing my back tees and filling up the tower, it overflowed before Langford and the high school even hit their mark. So, immediately we called and we contacted them and they realized that they were six feet off. This is, this is their solution to the problem, which is not going to cast, cost the town anything because it was their problem. Their insurance company is going to raise it up six feet without us having a problem. And we're behind on our schedule with our grants and all of our other stuff. But from my understanding is they're working with us on that.
Right.
So, they're going to, pretty soon here, they'll, as soon as we approve it, they'll start moving on it. There are, I'm assuming the board is going to make the decision on cutting the top off. They're going to cut that off, they're going to raise it six foot to match our Langford and our school. And then they'll put it all back together. Then this spring, they're going to come back and paint it and put our logo and everything back on it. And then we'll start the process of tearing down Langford Street Tower. But the only thing that we are going to get out of this is thirty thousand more gallons of water with the new tower, which will increase the pressure. So, some people didn't notice, not everybody, a lot of people didn't even know we were using the new tower. We've been using the new tower the whole time.
Yeah.
That it's been up and on. Well, certain people noticed a little bit of a decrease in pressure. But with the new, the, the new design and raising it six feet, we should have an increase in pressure now. Just a little bit, it shouldn't affect anybody. I don't, we really had any customers calling complaining while we were filling it. We filled it slowly, that it didn't disrupt the water flow or pour away to the body. So, we should be good to go while they do their repairs.
And what you need to know is Cod, uh, Midwestern is taking care of all of this. It is not crossing the town another dime. It was their mistake, they owned up to it, their insurance company is agreeing to fix it, so it will be fixed. When they can start this? Um, they hope to have the construction done in four months. They cannot paint until spring. So, it, it's going to be, it will be until it's complete. So, until the painting is completely done and it's red, fenced in and ready to go, it will, it will be spring. Before they start on? No. Okay. They intend to start as soon as they can. Okay. But the construction part, they said, would take up to four months. Because they have to take it apart and bring it down and they'll work on the ground and then they'll take it back up. It'll be just like a new tower, just like it was supposed to be.
We said twenty-five thousand gallons more water to use.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty.
Thirty, twenty-five, yeah, okay.
Sorry. Um... I need a motion to accept which plan you want to go with.
Make a motion to accept Codwell's plan.
And I'll second that, so, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, so we are, the Codwell Tank, you want to call them or you don't need to call them?
Um, I'll let you call them.
Okay. We did not have the salary ordinance on our agenda, so we are going to go ahead and, and, uh, do the salary ordinance and it's going to be six twenty twenty-five. So, if I can get a motion to accept...
Make a motion to accept the new salary ordinance, six twenty twenty-five.
And it's for twenty twenty-six. So, I will second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Um, I know what you all came in here for was to talk about the police department. Before we talk about the police department, I want to explain a couple of things to you and it may answer some of your questions. For several years, we have had Lloyd money, which some people know what I'm talking about. It's public safety money that has went in to the police department and it has been at an overage of, uh, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That money should have been in the general account. That has been going on for several years. That's how we bought cars, that's how we bought equipment, that's how we stayed. Our police department is a very nice police department. Well, when we got audited this last time, then State Board of Accounts transferred the money on their own because it didn't belong there. And then they said, you have this amount of money that is going to operate your police department. So, what we get is fifty thousand dollars or right at fifty thousand dollars a year for public safety. Public safety is fire department and police department. I don't know that you know this, but we pay the fire department for protection. The city does, just like the township does. So, we have been paying twenty-two thousand dollars a year for fire protection. Out of that fifty thousand dollars, so what's left goes to the police department. I have went to the fire department and asked them to take it to their board to lower our amount for the fire department, five thousand dollars. I thought that was a fair amount. Um, the other things are, uh, the wrong, like I said before, we started after Carla left with the audit. We were four hundred thousand dollars in the hole in our general fund. So, whatever we are not spending out of the police department, which was a hundred and fifty thousand for the police department, it was coming out of general. So, we started four hundred thousand dollars in the hole, we ended four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. We're not going anywhere. So, if you guys can come up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we can stay the way we are. But there, there is no way to come up with this money. Do you think that anybody wants any of these people to lose their job? It's not. I care deeply for both of them. I don't intend to fire both of them, which is a rumor that's going around, and I'm not firing anybody. They have, one of them has to move on to something different because we cannot afford to have them. We will go back to a night marshal status and, and that's just what we're going to do. The night marshal is going to have to work a few days because there's legal things that have to be done. There's things in the evening that happen around town, ballgames and such. The county has, Sarah has called and talked to the sheriff and he has agreed that he can help down here as much as possible. I don't know what you think the answer is going to be. There is no money. We cannot...
To pay to full-time.
To, to, to pay to full-time position. So, suggestions?
Yes, I have a question.
Wait, 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 suggestions?
No, that's what I'm saying, this is what, what we need to know. This, I didn't know this till tonight. I listen to all the rumors, but I don't really put a lot of faith in them. I have a lot of other questions beside the police department, as you can see by what I put out there. I want to know these things. So, this is something we do need to get everybody here and all to figure this out.
So, I want to ask a question. So, you said there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of local opportunity in tax, which is what LOIT stands for. And if you don't know, I am on Larry Moss, I don't live in town, but my son does and I'm president of Clay County Council. So, it's kind of understandable, but about the tax rate. So, if you were getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for LOIT, only fifty thousand of that was designated for public safety, am I correct?
Yes.
What was the other hundred thousand?
Coming out of?
Yeah, what was it being used for?
So, all of, all of that money that comes in, we've got, um, it's on, again, all of this is on Gateway. You can double check us. But that money is allocated to go toward our, um, our utilities to operate like the police department, uh, town hall, Fourteenth Street.
Streetlights.
Um, streetlights, it covers our insurance, um, so not just health insurance for our police department. Um, it kind of bridges the gap. That's what we've been doing, is it's been bridging the gap.
So, you can no longer use that money to do what you had been doing before?
No.
No, we cannot.
State Board of Accounts took it out and did it for us and said, you cannot.
They, they, these were designated monies for specific line items.
Right.
And, and State Board of Accounts said you can't use the portion that's designated for these other governmental uses for law enforcement.
So, where did it go? So, where was it going, so, like, where would it have went before?
Before it went, all the way to law enforcement.
So, I guess what I'm saying is you took the money back to cover the shortfall?
Not yet, no.
And then you have...
So, in two thousand twenty-six, the money, the hundred thousand...
So in two thousand twenty-six, the money, the hundred thousand dollars that had been going to law enforcement will no longer be going to law enforcement. So basically, we've been operating the police department on that full amount. Yet, a hundred thousand of that was actually designated for other areas of, of county government.
So, one of the things that I would encourage you to do is that, come to the council, come to the county council.
We called them.
And, really, as I was.
I talked to you, no, you called them. Who'd you call?
I was talking to the trustees.
Trustees.
Oh, yeah, that, I don't talk to the trustees, so. I talked to him, I seen him in town.
So we didn't talk to the council?
I talked to Larry.
No, she did.
I talked to Larry.
I talked, I called her.
Yes.
But, I didn't understand exactly what, because I, I thought what she was saying is because of the change in the law, LOIT was going away, which is not correct.
The thing, that affects us.
Well, it can actually be increased.
Yes.
And so.
The thing that we're trying to do.
Wasn't taking place till twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
To twenty twenty-seven is when it fully comes into effect. The thing is, is if this is where the state says that we need to be operating, really, they want us under here, but if this is the line, they say you need to be at. We keep getting further away. If we keep doing what we've been doing, there is not going to be a town, I'm just, not going to be a town. We have to bring that closer, closer to balance. We don't want State Board of Accounts to come in and say, you didn't do what we told you to do, so now, not only do you not get these funds allocated from the county, you're not getting these from the state, and then we're going to get rid of everybody and just start completely over. That's a huge mess.
Just, I'm at the end of my twentieth year, year, twenty-third year on the council, believe it or not, and this is it. I'm not running for reelection, so, and I've seen a lot of things happen in those years. We've had a couple of townships that had fraud that was involved, and in one particular case, we actually provided a loan for them to be able to cover their shortfall. Until, Clay County is in very financial, good, very good financial condition. And if we needed to help you, you should come to us, and we can see what we can do to work it out. Because, I, I, I'm not here to be a negative at all, I'm trying to be positive. So, you know, we can react to what's happened, and say we're just going to get rid of the, you know, two of the guys, we're going to have a night marshal. And, and I understand you're reacting to a budget, and I'm not criticizing you for that, I've reacted to budgets for twenty-three years. But what I'm saying is, let's try to be proactive, and going forward, let's communicate with all the other entities in the county, because there may be something that we could do to bridge you to where you need to go. And obviously, we would have to meet with our attorney to make sure that we can legally help, I believe there are probably ways that we can help. We literally have millions of dollars, we literally have millions of dollars in our, in this county that's just in savings. That, you know, if we, we have a rainy day fund, we have, you know, availability of resources, and I'm not saying that we can legally do anything. I'm just saying we need to consider what we might be, be able to do to help you. And one of the things you said earlier, and I really appreciate what you said, was that you put in the safe, all the safety mechanisms to be able to provide. If you, every, whether it's the county or the township, quite honestly, your local church, they all need to have ways that they can protect themselves. You know, people are messed up in general, and so you have people who make honest mistakes, and you have people who make criminal mistakes, and you have all in between.
One of, we got one of the things that's going on that we're kind of waiting to see how this is going to fall out is, we have been informed that there is a plea agreement pending that included a restitution order with an initial payment, a substantial initial payment. Now, we haven't seen that come to fruition yet, but, but that would be helpful in, in decreasing the deficit that we're in right now.
Well, one, one of, I want everybody to be aware of, so, tax law in Indiana obviously has changed, you never heard of SB one and all the things that are going on there. My, my daughter Lindsay is one of the primary attorneys who writes those types of laws in the state of Indiana. Just by sheer coincidence, she's a born and raised Clay City person, and so I got a good resource to talk to. And you know, well, there are things that can be done, um, that are, that could be proactive in the future. We possibly could even, we, we have, Clay County is number one in the state of Indiana for property taxes, as far as the, the value of our prop tax. We're the lowest value of property tax in the state of Indiana. And we're number twenty-one of all counties in the United States. Okay? And so, we've done a good job, we have funds, and you're going to be, and one of the reasons we did it, as many years ago, we decided to do income-based taxes. Seventy-five percent of our property taxes in Clay County are covered by tax. Now, this law is going to mess that up, to be honest with you, and so we're going to have to probably change that formula. And when we do, the county can change its formula, but the, the town also, as a town under thirty-five hundred, is going to be able to have their own tax rate. And so I think going down the road is that the big emphasis needs to be, okay, how much do we need to operate? What do we need to make our town the most viable we can? We need to encourage economic development, we need to do all the things we can to build our tax base and the people in our town. Make it welcoming for growth and for building, and there's a lot of stuff going on in that area. I think a lot of these problems that we're wringing our hands about today can be mitigated and eventually go away. And we can still have our law enforcement officers and working every day. And, you know, I've got six grandkids that live within the town limits of Clay City. I grew up here, you know, can't remember just better than I do, but we, we had a town marshal get shot right down here on Main Street. We had another one get shot, and I was sitting on Main Street the day Elvis died, and my mom and dad's car going ready to go to the tar road to get clothes for school. And right across the street, we literally pulled out and right across the street, another town marshal got shot in the leg when the bank was robbed. Crime back then was nothing compared to what it is now. We didn't have the major drug issues that we have, and all the crime going on in communities, and quite honestly, the sexual based crimes would have become just ridiculous. I want to be able to have my grandkids safe in the community of Clay City, and I know all you do too, I'm not sitting here saying you don't want that. I'm just saying, why don't we work together to try and make a proactive solution to this problem? Instead of making a reaction, let's try to work through these things in the short term, and if we can't do it down the road, you can make a more, a, a different decision. But I'm just saying, why don't we work through some of these things?
Absolutely.
And see what we can do.
I understand that, but you may or may not be able to get a loan, but how do you think we're going to pay that loan back, Larry?
Well, if you make them long enough and you have a new income coming in down the road, I would say you'd probably be able to do it.
What new income?
Part of it.
A hundred thousand dollars from the hundred and fifty, would that help the county balance?
You're, you're going to be, I can just tell you right now, so.
Oh, no, it'd be in the general.
Public safety.
At least pay the loan, I would assume.
On public safety LOIT in Clay County right now, the whole county rate is point one percent. That's what it is for the whole county. You get a portion of that, your portion is fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
The town in Clay City actually, by law, not including, not including what the county would give them, can, will by twenty twenty-eight be able to raise four tenths of a percent within the system of their, their town. So they're going to be able to have additional income there, plus additional income from the county because they're replacing property taxes. By the way, I wouldn't really sweat that too much, Clay City, Harrison Township's got the lowest tax rate in Clay County. And so you're not going to lose a boatload of money from top tax revenue from.
Okay, but if they do away with property tax, what they're talking about.
It's going to be changed this year.
I was going to say, how do you think we're going to make up that money?
I think that you're.
We're going to implement our own tax?
If you.
They're not going to like to pay city tax either.
Well, I can tell you this, I mean, if that happens, it's going to be a lot bigger problems, it's not going to be just focused on Clay City, it's going to be the whole county. It's going to be the whole state. I think you're worrying about something that you're afraid is going to come back on to you, it's really going to be on all of us. And I, I think you just, just, you need to like slow down a little bit and think about.
But we have to pass a budget.
I understand that.
And we're, we're constrained by what money we have put in the budget this year, now maybe in the future.
We're behind the eight ball, and I agree with you there.
And, and in the future, if we get new sources of income.
Yes.
Then we can budget for that additional, for that additional available revenue.
The state has to pass your budget, and you can, you can get your budget passed, you can come in the very first quarter of next year, and you can do additional, so if you have cash balances available, and maybe we can solve that problem, that's what our whole point is. So I'm not very much understanding how the budget works.
There's an option for the city to get with the counties, what you're saying, and see if we can.
I'd say we at least need to explore it, that's, that's.
I think that's a good idea, but that does not take away, we have to pass a budget now.
That's my point is, Larry, you're, you're, I'm not against keeping our cops, but, or anything like that. What you're saying is, we can maybe bridge, maybe this, maybe that, it's a lot of what is. We may have to make a decision. Speak for everybody else, that's why I say. And why have. Maybe there will be a flavor in this county of people that would like to do a good thing? No, I think everybody does.
At this point, my understanding is that, um, we've waited too long to the point that we have to pass, pass a budget now, but why? Why are we?
Why did we wait so long?
Why, why did the discussion of this start so late into the time?
Well, believe it or not, this started last January. I asked the police department a couple of times to cut where they could cut, and there was no way that they could cut. So, this is not new. You, you guys think it's new, but it's not.
Honestly, honestly, like, it really doesn't matter.
We didn't buy anything, actually.
It doesn't.
Put it out there like that.
No, that's not what I meant. That's, I didn't ask if you were buying something, what we could cut.
Starts today.
I know.
It doesn't matter.
And, and I just, that just goes back to like, okay, we have to pass the budget now. But, that, and that's what I was trying to point to, is that, that we can still pass a budget where we are providing for the police. Like, and, and it might put us in a bind right now, and I, and I'll have, I would have to look to the finances to, to see at what position you are in. To understand fully. But, if we can go, uh, with this and begin to have more discussions of the options being presented, why, why is it that we have to pass a budget where we're deciding to cut? Well, no, that's not what I'm saying. We're, we're, pass a budget, we're, we're, we have to decide to reduce the police department over limit.
Because we were told that we've, we have to bring our finances back closer to the line, we are over, we are so close to the line. We're going to have to do something.
If it just was your household, what would you do? Honest.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking, why does it have to be tonight?
Because this is our, our dead man for passing the budget.
The water department is self-sufficient, and it makes its own money.
I guess I need to clarify that.
Okay, we are.
We can pull some of that from the general fund to move it to.
You cannot do that.
We have one employee in every department, so I don't know what we want to cut.
I'm answering Courtney's question, so Courtney asked about where, where we're paid out of.
Because you said you have a payroll account.
Yes, we have.
So like everybody, the officers, you guys, the water, everybody paid.
It's paid out of the payroll account, so what happens is, um, we have wastewater and the employees, it's paid out of that fund. So wastewater would be Randy, um, and Jim. So it's in the ordinance, the, can you pull up that? Yeah, can I have that? Okay, so we have, basically, we have pockets of money. We can't keep robbing Peter to pay Paul and putting our hands in all the cookie jars. We allocate the money for each department, so how it is, is the, um, the town council members is paid, State Board of Accounts says we can be paid out of all three accounts. So we're paid out of the general, the wastewater, and the water, it's split into thirds. So it's not, it's not burdensome on just the, just the general, it's being split out of all three. The, my salary is paid out of all three. The street superintendent, he's paid out of street allocations that come in through the county and the state. He's paid out of wastewater and water because he helps with the water and the sewer and all that good stuff. The water operator and utility clerk, she's paid out of all three, uh, so it's the general, wastewater, and water. The marshals are paid out of, and this is what they say need, has to be paid out of these funds. It's paid out of the general, we bridge the gap of what the lit, the Lloyd, uh, local in tax public shares. What we can't cover out of that, the general covers. What we're trying to explain is there's money allocated for all of those things, but we don't, we can't justify spending two hundred thousand dollars for the retirement, for the salary, for all that, for both of the marshals, and their money for us to pay them, it can't come out of the wastewater, it can't come out of the water, it can't come out of the streets.
But your guys' can come out of all three, so can't you shuffle your guys'?
We cannot.
No?
No, and that's not me saying no, that's literally how the, that's how the state stipulates it. And it is, it's, it's not easy, nobody wants to do this, but this hasn't been done correctly in so long that it's going to take harder decisions to kind of get us back on track. And we can't keep paying, robbing Peter to pay Paul, we can't keep taking money from general to cover water, and then taking money from sewer to cover, you know, general.
You can do that, but it has to be a loan, and it has to be repaid.
And it's been so many, and there's not, there's not been a clear thing, we just cleaned up this, the beginning of this year, we moved all the money back to where it was supposed to be, and then State Board of Accounts did the same when they came in and kind of told us, you're a mess, this is what needs to happen, and we reset everything. We reset everything so that we can keep building, it's not, this isn't something that, this is forever, but it is for right now.
Just for clarification, you're saying the, what'd you call it, Lloyd, with money, what did you say?
Uh, local and, yeah.
Public safety money, that's not, you're not saying that that's, that the, that is all you could spend legally?
No, but if we keep taking it out of general.
I understand, that's what I'm asking, just for clarification, not saying that that's all you can spend it on in general spends.
Right, in theory, if we had a big surplus in general, we don't, we have a four hundred thousand dollar deficit.
Yeah.
Uh, if we have extra money there, you know, one of the things we do act, actually, is we have a deferral program that we can get additional money, which, which I think we were generating quite a bit once upon a time, but not so much recently, and that can be used, uh, which we have a fund set up that we can use then for law enforcement out of that.
And I'm going to bring up one more question, and don't shoot me, Randy. Have, has the town ever looked at selling our water and sewer?
Why would we do that?
I'm asking, there's a lot of places do it, I'm asking, why do they do it?
The answer is yes. Indiana approached us once upon a time to purchase the.
I'm not saying to shit, because like Sullivan sold their water years ago, they're in the process of selling their sewer to maintain policemen. And that's why I'm asking.
My, my, my opinion on this, um, is, and I represent Sullivan Bigelow Water. They want to, if, if they thought that would, they could make a dollar off of it, they would, they haven't been back. They, they, for example, they bought Farmersburg's water. If they can make money off of it, they're interested, but if they're making money off of it, I think that eventually that costs consumers more.
I was just bringing up, I'm not suggesting it, I'm asking.
It's a good question, it's a very good question.
When I first came on, Lloyd Hunter was running our utilities. I want you to know, the board before I came on had never been to the water department. We walked out there, there was algae all over the floor, spraying out the tank, it had run that way for, I don't know how long. And it, it took us a year and a half, and we got it cleaned up. You have good water, everybody says, oh, the water's terrible, the water is not terrible, it passes every town.
I wasn't trying to suggest it.
It's a good question, it's a very good question.
Yes, it is.
And we would have a one-time payment, and when then that's gone, then it's gone, and we don't have any more revenue from.
My point is, is we got the water department fixed, we've got the tanks in process of being fixed, why would we sell it? Right now, we have money that, this, you know, in January, we have a hundred thousand dollar loan due, and this is the first January since I've been on, the, the money is there. In, in the utilities, because Randy cleaned it up.
So if the utilities start doing well, we're no longer having to fix everything.
Right.
Does that money ever jump over to general fund?
No, you just keep upgrading and keep everything going, yeah. Yeah, utilities and the, and the town have, they're separate.
But if we was to sell it, that would go into the general fund, and we'd have to live off of it for whatever the length of the leases, right?
Right.
Just.
Yeah, I know, a lot of people think that that's the answer.
I'm not saying it's the answer, I'm asking.
Yeah, that we have a good sewer department and we have a good water department and, you know, most people that sell off, they need all this work done, you know, they need things done, they need things fixed. We're in good shape.
So if we wasn't in debt four hundred thousand dollars, would that be possible if you were a police officer still now?
If, if there was enough money available in the budget, we could budget a portion of it, in hypothetically, yes.
So if it does get reimbursed somehow?
It, it's, it's a good question. I didn't tell you what percent, it's about twenty-five percent.
All right, another question is, I'm involved with organization, has a few hundred thousand dollars and our financial secretary has to be licensed and bonded, so if anybody ever takes anything, it's insurance, it's automatically put back in.
We have, we have a bond, both of the clerk treasurers, the one who allegedly engaged in criminal malfeasance and the other in just negligent malfeasance, we have bonds on each of them and we're in the process of trying to collect, but those are forty-five thousand.
Forty-five, it's forty-five thousand per year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do know why we can't collect it.
We haven't collected it so far.
She has not been charged yet.
Officially charged, right.
Do you think it would be a better idea, though, how much ever we have in the general fund, be bonded for that amount? So if somebody.
I don't know, I, I, that's a question I don't know, is how much.
Your bond works on, on what your credit rating is. That seems silly, but if you have a good credit rating, you get a higher bond. If you have a poor credit rating, you get the minimum. And that, and we pay more for it. But everybody that works in our office is bonded.
Maybe we can get Larry to get the bond for us.
Does he sell insurance?
Well, to the Clay County Commissioners.
The insurance account purchases, who do we purchase that from?
It's in your little, uh, note, or in the thing, so.
The town has had Kogan Hour for several years.
Do we shop that out to multiple insurance agencies?
They have shopped parts of it out.
Yeah.
But not all of it inclusive, just to see if we can get a better deal?
Right. That's something that we will be doing. Um, I know for workman's comp specifically, no one would touch us, so we, uh, we end up having to go through the state. Luckily, this, uh, when we renew, we will be able to be shopped back out and hopefully get a cheaper rate.
Like on our vehicles and everything.
They shop us out for everything and then that's what, I included it in that, um, so we'll be working on that. And it's got dates too for when they're up for renewal.
Any other questions?
I just, I, I just, there's part of it, your taste that we have to make such a quick decision. I understand the budget process and I know the state requires it, but I just wish that we could have been more proactive. I don't, I never even, I didn't know where you were at, I wish I would have known it.
This has been going on for six months or more, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've been reading, I've talked about it. We've talked, probably the last five times I've been here, it's not more.
Larry, we appreciate you coming and offering all of that.
We had our budget meeting last week, it was posted.
But that was a closed meeting, is that correct?
No, it was posted publicly. We had two, we had a first reading and a final reading.
And both of those were, we are state compliant, so we posted it in the newspaper. We had it posted on our social media page and then I had printed them out and posted them on the bulletin boards around town, so.
Okay, I guess I knew it was.
I understand what Larry's trying to say about maybe he can do this and maybe he can do that. We can't operate on maybe. And I know.
I just like to have a little optimism.
Yeah, at least we're checking into and get a solid yes or no.
Next year, I, yeah, for next, I mean, I, what we're really looking at is then in the next budget cycle, see if next year we can find some other revenue source to, to be able to assist us to.
I mean, that would be after the first year, cause I mean, the budget we pass is not the one we technically run off of the entire year. It changes monthly. Like we go back, ask for more money, we put money in different accounts, we switch it around. It's something that after the first year, you can look into and possibly have the county help out. And then the county has a forty-eight dollar budget.
Yeah, the town's running on a little, little bit small.
County can help, I mean, it's still something.
Oh, absolutely, we definitely will.
I don't think they'd want to help, I mean, cause otherwise you're going to have to.
I'm saying, we, we're people, sure, our department, it'd be hard to get people down here all the time, so.
Well, it makes sense if they had another guy quit the other day, so.
So what is the amount we're paying the county police if we have to rely on them as that party budget? So you don't have to pay the county to pick up the slack?
So as long as we may, from how I understand it, as long as we maintain, um, a marshal, um, we still receive the, the, uh, Lloyd Public Safety shares. Now, if we do away with all of that, which we're not, but if we were to do that, then yes, the county would absorb that and then he would send guys to come and cover that.
Another question, will we be able to maintain the reserve force that we have?
That depends on them.
And what does that cost us?
Just their training and their equipment and.
So a thousand, two thousand a year, maybe?
Yeah, two thousand.
I hope that that's something they're considering to keep going on.
The training can be absorbed through the sheriff's office. I mean, we have instructors and everything from firearms to EVO, to putting tactics, it's required by them. We have instructors and all of them come up, get free training from us.
For the reserves?
Yeah.
No.
Or for anybody.
The door's open. We'd like a lot of discussion, bring out a lot of good ideas.
I'm going to make a motion to, uh, reduce the police department to one officer for the upcoming year.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to elect a marshal for twenty twenty-six.
Right, everyone?
Yeah, we're making motions here.
Don made a motion to take the police department to a marshal's department with one officer in the past. So now his motion is to. What?
To the like, one marshal?
One marshal.
For twenty twenty-six.
Do you want to voice your opinion?
Well, I think, uh, basically we'll have to do it according to seniority, we have the most seniority in the first place. To operate.
I will tell you that Tim is not for that, even though he's not here, he can't vote. Um, I am inclined to believe that seniority is the most important thing. Um, we've had one officer with us for over twenty years and I don't want either one of them to go, but, and I, I just don't know what else to do about it. So Terry Scaggs will be the marshal for twenty twenty-six. And, uh, I second your motion also, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Um, we are going to make a motion to sell one of the police cars and put the money in.
I have a question.
The Lloyd.
What are you calling, what's happening to me? Am I being fired, am I being dismissed?
We are reducing a position.
At the end of the year.
The position is being eliminated at the end of the year.
Yes. And you still have your benefits and stuff until the end of the year. Um.
Are you going to, uh, you said you're going to pay us till the end of the year. Is there a situation where it's going to be like a severance package you're going to give us?
No, we don't have that. It's, you work till the end of the year, you get your benefits till the end of the year.
So I can't actively go look for a job I need to put my hours into?
Well, you don't work every day anyway. I mean, during the day.
I mean, if you want to resign, you may resign, but the.
Oh, I'm not resigning.
But the position is still, and you would be expected to meet all the obligation of any other full-time employee while you continue to be employed.
So we get no, we get no nothing for twenty-five years of service, we don't get.
Thirteen, he donated for free, he didn't get paid from you guys at all. And he worked a full-time job.
Oh, what are you talking about?
When he was a reserve for thirteen years.
I wasn't here, I don't know.
Okay, well, that don't matter, he still did it.
But anyway, that's, that's not important.
I don't know, is anything in the ordinance do there anywhere for that?
We don't have any of that, but.
Small thing.
What do you guys think about signing my weapons over to you, you know, if it's an issue to me at least?
That's, can you, that's, that is county money that people.
That's taxpayer money and it would have to go through state board of accounts to figure. Um, we can bring it up at the December meeting on that.
Hey, hold crap, buddy.
What about my phone?
No, hey, wait a minute, let's, you as a board need to talk about my pay because evidently it's an issue. I'm.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Okay, go right ahead.
You guys can ask any question you want, but do it.
I ordered a lead by my boss.
Do, do it simple, ask whatever you want, but ju- just do it simple. You want to know about Randy's pay? Randy holds four licenses. She has the wastewater, the water, the distribution.
And the pond.
And the pond, which is.
I have the license too, just so you know.
Okay, I'm, that wasn't the question. So she has that and then she's also a water and utility clerk. Do you know one job for one hundred thousand dollars a year? Okay, she does four, plus the utility clerk. She makes thirty-five dollars an hour. Do you think that's too much money for four jobs?
Does it sound, yeah?
No, it's not. If she goes, you're going to hire somebody for a hundred thousand dollars a year to come and run your plants. Ask him, he runs them.
Me and Jake there in this town for fifteen hundred dollars a month. He got paid for wastewater, I got paid for water. The board asked me to come back, I just took that pay and then resumed the, uh, that pay right there, average it all up, do a calculation, and then I get paid to be the utility clerk. That is that pay. I'm just still getting paid what I was getting paid, but now you got me here every single day, eight hours a day, and which I put in more than eight hours a day.
Because she worked every other weekend.
And you can track it every.
Okay, any other questions? I'm not trying to be a turd here, but if you guys want to throw it out there, I can throw it back.
Why are we paying guys to mow vacant lots?
Well, because we have an ordinance.
When we retire our money.
We have an ordinance that the grass can only be so high, so when they have been served.
Put that aside and save the money.
Can you come out where I can see?
Or if the house is up for tax sale.
I mean, how are we getting reimbursed for that?
Well, she's turning the tickets into the courthouse, the other clerks did not, so they didn't.
We put liens on the property.
How's that working out for us?
Do you get, do you have a suggestion, sir?
Did you just hear what I said?
You obviously have some good ideas, I'm just sharing, well, that my talent is.
Can you just answer the question?
I did.
Instead of hiring.
We are collecting them through Sarah. The other clerks did, the other two clerks we had did not collect them, no, they didn't. Anybody else?
Will I be allowed to keep my two-year-old phone and watch?
Terry, can we talk about this later?
Don't know when later's going to be, I mean.
I would suggest it be handed in executive session and you can bring up these issues.
Yes.
I don't think you can go crappy with.
I'm not, I, I don't think I am.
Okay, the motion.
I do have one, but I'm.
Everybody probably thinks you have one, so.
Don has a motion to sell one of our police vehicles, so I'm going to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The reserves, I would like to find out who's interested in staying or whatever and then we will make a motion on that next meeting. Is that good?
Sounds good to me.
All right. So if there's no other further business, oh, I got to make a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills?
All in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carried. The next employee meeting is November twenty-fourth at eight o'clock. The next town council meeting is December second at six. If you guys want to look at any of these papers or anything up here, you're welcome to do it. It's the water tower, the salary ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh.
Before you do, can I say thank you for, um, explaining what was happening with, with the police department? I, I do appreciate that.
Yeah. And. It would be much easier if people would just ask us instead of assuming, because it's really hard when you get on Facebook and you just get nothing but slammed. Everybody wants to know why we're getting paid. I will tell you, this year I've not received a paycheck because I signed it all back over. I will tell you that our clerks, our clerks, our clerks and our, our, our utility clerk, they spent a good five hundred dollars apiece buying their own supplies. So don't, don't belittle them, they're doing everything they can to get this town back on track.
I don't think anybody belittled anybody necessarily. I just, I just wanted to express appreciation for the explanation.
I appreciate that. Okay, so you made a motion to adjourn, I'll second, so everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.